Okay, it is seven oh three. We'll call this meeting of the North Fair Oaks Community Council to order. Begin with a roll call, please.
Commencing move on now. Vice Chair. Councilmember Juan Carlos Prado.
President.
Councilmember Everado Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Niket Cersei.
Here.
Councilmember Kathleen Dally.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kelly Parisi.
Here.
Councilmember George Salmon. Councilmember Mari Mariella Peralta.
Here.
Chair Brooks Actor.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The new people. And item two, public comment. Anyone may speak up to two minutes on any topic not on the agenda. If you're in the room, please fill out a speaker slip. Those attending in Zoom may use the raised hand feature. Note that council may not discuss or take action on items not on the agenda. Do we have any public comment to see?
You do. We have one speaker sub submitted. When I call your name, you may come to the podium. We'll have two minutes to speak. I'd like to call Kenny from OCA.
Good evening, council members. On Tuesday, the County Board of Supervisors proclaimed November twelfth to the eighteenth United Against Hate Week. For a county that rejects hatred, prejudice, racism, sexism, bullying, bigotry, or violence in any manner towards any individual regardless of race, ethnicity, disability, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, so- social economic status, immigration status, or country of origin. The message is clear. We reject hate of any kind. We believe in standing and building a safer, more equitable community. We must stand together. I'm proud to stand here with you to be united against hate. Thank you for this support. If I can, I would like to take a few minutes to share a brief video that celebrates our diversity and community members, including North Fair Oaks, coming together to stand up against hate.
San Mateo County stands united against hate.
Somos Unidos contra el odio. And Nachno Umdin Baya Chad.
Thanks for Kenny. Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the room? Do we have comment online? Hey, agenda item number three, welcoming new council members. Kelly Parisi and Mariella Peralta. Congratulations to both of you. As by way of introduction, Mariella, as many of you know, is the owner of Composed Burritos on Middlefield and was one of the leaders in the effort to obtain funding for the businesses impacted by the construction on Middlefield Road. Kelly worked with Supervisor Slocum to relocate a recycling center that was not in compliance with state and local ordinances. It was inappropriately located in a residential area. She also has a terrific background in communications, which I'm sure we're going to leverage in the coming years. We expand our council outreach efforts. Welcome to the council, both of you. Would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you so much. I'm so excited to be working with all of you and I hope in the coming months and years, all of those chairs are filled and we have to pull more off the wall to get more people here to raise their voices on issues that matter in this community.
Thank you. And Mariella?
I am also very grateful to be here, to be a part of the community and to be a voice for not only business owners, but also, you know, everybody in this community feels they don't have a voice and I am very excited to do a lot of legwork and break.
I'm looking forward to work with you very much. Do we have any questions, comments from other council members? Vice Chair Whitney?
Welcome. First of all, I know the charter is that you either have business, a business here, or you work here, or you live here, or all the above. I assume you live here because they didn't say that you owned a business here and you run a business on Middlefield. Do you also live here?
I live on Friendly Acres.
Okay, so just immediately adjacent.
Yeah.
I'm North Fair Oaks proud.
I'm Marsh Road area.
Off of Middlefield, yes.
Just want to say welcome. Looking forward to working with you all. And thank you.
Any other comments from council members' questions? Do we have any public comment on this this agenda item? Okay, well, thank you both very much. Looking forward to working with both of you. Agenda item number four, a minimum wage ordinance increase in San Mateo County. That presentation is going to be given not by Adam Ely, but I believe by Justin Mates. Is that correct?
Good evening everyone. Yes, Chair Esser.
They've sent in the A team tonight. Is that right, Justin?
It is very good to be with the North Fair Oaks Community Council. Again, I'm covering for my colleague who's unable to be with you all tonight and I'm sorry, I'm not able to be there in person. But I am happy to come and give a very brief presentation on the county's minimum wage ordinance increase. As you all may remember, last year, the Board of Supervisors adopted a minimum wage for San Mateo County unincorporated employers. And every year, it was set at sixteen dollars and fifty cents last year, and at every year, it adjusts to reflect the lesser of either the inflation or three and a half percent. This year, effective January first, the minimum wage will be going up from sixteen dollars and fifty cents to seventeen dollars and six cents. There it is on the on the board. Thank you for putting up that slide. It implies to all employers in the unincorporated area, including North Fair Oaks. It implies it applies to all employees, gig workers. It is the minimum wage that applies. Yeah, if for wage enforcement purposes, that is enforced by the state by the Division of Labor Standards Enforcement of the Labor Commissioner's Office. And this minimum wage applies for any sort of wage claim filed with the state with respect to an employee in the unincorporated area. That is essentially all I have to report. I'm happy to answer questions, but we definitely did want to get the word out. We have been putting out press releases and sending information out to the business associations and folks we think that places we think that businesses may get their information from. And and we also have on our website a sort of notice of a flyer, if you will, that employers can download and post in their businesses so that everyone has the information about the minimum wage.
Thank you, Justin. Are there questions from council members? Vice Chair Whitney?
Justin, thanks for the update. I know the Multicultural Institute has championed a lot of folks that get paid cash for casual labor to make sure that they don't get experience wage that. And I know that in this new economy, there's a lot of people in the service industry that might be picking up work on Nextdoor or other platforms to you know, do services and maybe it's a cash transaction. It's kind of an honor thing. W two employees are, it's easy to track. But folks that are informally, you know, doing the house cleaning or whatever. It's it might be easier for them to maybe be abused or whatever. So you know, it's it's on the person that's offering the employment to be honorable. And I think there's a resource with the Multicultural Institute where they did offer help for people that didn't get paid for the work they did and they so I I think we need to just offer that as a resource to down the line if people end up complaining that, you know, I'm I'm not getting I'm not getting this wage. They're they're treating me as a second-class citizen because I may not be a traditional immigrant.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that I wasn't aware of those offerings from the Multicultural Institute and I think that's important and certainly you know, off, well, informal employment it probably avoids a lot of regulations and rules, but this minimum wage is meant to apply to all employees in the unincorporated area. We don't have our own independent enforcement mechanism here locally, but anybody who's entitled to the minimum wage, this is the minimum wage that applies for purposes of state enforcement. But I appreciate your comment. It's more about at a local level having some, it sounds like some sort of service or enforcement is what you're.
Yeah, like an ombudsman or someone that people can reach out to complain and if multicultural can help, fine. If someone else can help, sometimes you just have to put people on Front Street that, you know, you're not paying a domestic help. The wages, you know, you you say that they're no pair or like this or that and you're screwing around and it's a cash transaction where things aren't on paper as much as they should be. Anyway, I'm just acknowledging that that reality exists in this community.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members?
I did have one quick question on the rate increase. So that was, what was the percentage increase and how did that compare to the inflation rate? That it was a greater of or maximum of?
Yeah, it's the lesser of three and a half percent for the change in CPI. So the CPI change was three point four percent, and so that was the increase in the minimum wage. And on our county website, we actually have the calculation. So folks can see how it was derived. I I don't know if we had it on the slide, but that website is that the counties. Do we have it on the slide? Sorry, in any case, if you just search for San Mateo County minimum wage, you'll get to our website. There it is.
And it's a quick follow-up. Have we done any studies or understanding is is this a livable wage or is this something that needs to be supplemented or, you know, what is if somebody works full-time at the minimum wage, are they being paid a livable salary for this area?
Yeah, there's different ways to calculate a livable wage and or what you would need in San Mateo County for wages. A lot of different schools of thought on that. The the stated purpose in the in the for the Board of Supervisors last year was really to supplement the state minimum wage. So this is higher than the state minimum wage. I'm not sure if it would satisfy all measures of a of a of a livable wage, but it's higher than what otherwise would apply under the state.
Okay, thank you.
Math on my part says it's about thirty-seven five a year.
Okay, so it's much less.
That wouldn't. Other questions from council members?
Kathleen? More comment than anything else. I think Niket's point about it being a livable wage, it isn't even close. And quite frankly, as a former small business owner, I know that you could ride one city over and make more than that. And if you look it indeed and you look at all the jobs that are out there, it's not it's not criticism because I know the county has to do what they have to do and follow the state, but you can find jobs for nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty dollars an hour that are the same seventeen dollar and six cents an hour. But I think more importantly, the point I want to make is that every time I think we think or we make a decision about housing, just remember that no one can afford to live here on a minimum wage salary. No one can afford to almost live here on twice the minimum wage salary. So every time we make a decision about market rate housing versus below market rate or affordable, it's really important that we keep that in mind because just go on indeed, do yourself a favor and go on indeed and see what's out there. And it's it's a it's kind of brutal.
Any other questions from council members?
Yeah. So, eh, thank you for coming on to present. Eh, I'm wondering about people that work for companies that are not based within San Mateo County, let's say, I don't know, the gig economy, Lyft or Uber. If somebody per se lives here and drives for Uber, but if the company, if the Uber company is not based here, how would that work in terms of the minimum wage?
So, thank you. That's a very detailed question. I think the best I my best understanding is that the minimum wage applies to all time worked within the geographic boundaries of the unincorporated area. Not the red, not the residency of the worker or even the, you know, headquarters of the business, but for time worked within the unincorporated area.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
I have more of a comment. Um, as a business owner, I've noticed and my parents were also doing business for over thirty years and I've noticed that they encounter an issue with once minimum wage goes up, they are a very small company. They have to raise their prices as well. So you, my family's business is is those that feed or, you know, it's more delivered towards these families that earn minimum wage, but they earn a little more, yet they have to also spend more. So I would love for us in the future to visit this and see how we can help out where minimum wage goes up, but you know, we are able to somehow work with small businesses so that we don't have to increase the price for items in our small businesses, you know, to also help us pay more to the employees. Yeah, so I would love to. I know I'm a little late now, but I would love for us to revisit this sometime.
Thank you very much. Further questions from the council?
I have a question, which is, is there any supplementation of businesses that are adversely affected based on massive construction? I know the Middlefield project is next and so we are also talking about raising minimum wage, which is a worthy endeavor and probably doesn't go far enough. And there are all of these ancillary issues, but you also have businesses struggling because you can't even get into them right now. Are there? Um, I know the county with these two wonderful ladies next to me were a part of getting the supervisors to provide grants, but are there any county tax deductions or any things when their income is drastically reduced based on county construction?
It's a good question, a complicated issue. In this case, as you just mentioned, with the combined impact of the Middlefield Road project and the unanticipated duration of that project coupled with the timing during recovery, during the recovery from the pandemic, the board did authorize a special grant program in that instance. I'm not aware of another instance in which that's happened, at least not in my memory, and I'm not aware of any program for that. As you can imagine, it's a complicated issue. There are some public works programs and projects that benefit everybody, could very well benefit the businesses and there might that that being said, there might also be, you know, short-term impacts as well. And I'm not aware of any program, standing program to compensate businesses or residents for that sort of thing. I think under the general idea that most public works projects provide necessary services and benefit the whole community. But I appreciate where you're what you're identifying that some businesses are impacted by public works projects.
Anything else from council members? Do we have any public comment on this agenda items? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Justin, for the overview. Good seeing you.
Fair thing. Good to see you.
Agenda item number five, Middlefield Road update. That's a presentation that's going to be given by Kristoff Lysai of the Department of Public Works. Christian, the floor is yours.
Great. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Let me just give you one sec while I share my screen. All right. So good evening, everybody. My name is Kristoff Lysai. I'm the Deputy Director of Public Works. So we're seeing the Engineering and Resource Protection Division. And my group is responsible for the management of the Middlefield Road Improvement Project. Tonight I'll be giving you all an update since the last time I came to the North Fair Oaks Community Council, which was back in April. So as a reminder, the project limits are from MacArthur Avenue to Sixth Avenue. The roadway improvements are a little bit narrower in scope and they go from Pacific Avenue to Fifth and then the utility underground work all the way from MacArthur to Fifth. And then we are also replacing the sanitary sewer from Douglas to Sixth.
Kristoff, we don't see your screen.
Oh. Will you guys see it now?
Yeah, I can see it now. Thank you.
Great. Sorry about that. So as a reminder, the project includes several elements. It does include a road diet, so we will be reducing the lane configuration from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction with a center turn pocket. This allows us to widen the sidewalks and install buffered bike lanes. We'll also be installing new pedestrian vehicular vehicular traffic lights, high-visibility crosswalks with rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the crossings of Middlefield Road. And then the new widened sidewalks will be installing solar-powered benches, bike racks, and new trash receptacles. Additionally, there'll be some smart features included, including public wifi, smart parking, informational kiosks, and traffic analytics. And then once the project is completed, all the overhead lines will be removed, which will start in twenty twenty-four based on PG&E's schedule. I do want to note that process can take as long as eighteen months once we're done and it's done by the utilities. And then finally, we're also be installing green infrastructure and stormwater treatment features as part of this project and with the intent of those of alleviating some of the ponding issues that we've experienced along Middlefield and to treat stormwater, which is a requirement from the California Water Board. So as far as the main updates for the project, I'm happy to say the sanitary sewer work was recently completed at a hundred percent. And that's when we completed the jack and bore work under the railroad near Pacific Avenue. Storm drain and green infrastructure work is about ninety percent complete. So we completed the storm drain pipes and in green infrastructure basins, you've probably seen those on some of the corners. And the next piece of that is going to be just filling those with the right mix of rock and soil for treatment and then as well as planting that with some landscaping vegetation. As far as the joint trench work, so this is all of the underground utility infrastructure that will ultimately house the overhead power lines and communication lines. We're about ninety-five percent complete. The only remaining works include the crossings of the railroad. So there's three crossings that we have on Middlefield and then additional two that lead into Redwood Junction towards the health center. Surface improvements, so that includes like the sidewalks, curb and gutter. We're about ninety percent complete on that. All of the phases are generally complete with the exception of phase nine, which is just north of the railroad on the right side. If you're going into Redwood City, so kind of by the barbecue place. And then one of the last items that we'll be doing is going to be the site furnishings, which are going to be the planting of the trees and then installing the benches, bike racks, trash receptacles, and some of the smart features I mentioned earlier. So this slide just shows some of the progress across the various phases of the project. It's broken down into ten different phases based on various blocks. And as you can see, we're very close to completing the work within most of the phases. All of the checkmarks are green and so now we're concentrating our efforts on work at the railroad crossing. And then the remaining work over the next couple of months will be the final paving and then striping, which will actually be coming at the end of November. So I want to take some time to go over some of the photos from the project over the last six months. As always, we try to keep public convenience top of mind for the work. So these photos show the detours that were established when we're working on the sidewalk. So the goal of this is to allow pedestrians to continue to use and access the stores. We want to keep them out of the work zone, so we put in chain link fencing for where the contractors are working, put K rail between that and the street and then allow a path of travel for pedestrians and then kind of have cutouts along the way for them to access stores. In addition to this, we make sure to construct access ramps in phases where the concrete is removed. So this shows some of the access ramps that we completed in phase eight. Public Works works very closely with our colleagues at the community of the Office of Community Affairs. So we do this to ensure that we understand and can meet both the needs of the individual businesses. So this includes, we meet with OCA on a regular basis once a week and just talk about some of the issues. OCA has a really good pulse on what's going on in the neighborhood and we use that as an opportunity to share some of our concerns that are brought up as well as things that the construction project is going to be doing over the next couple of weeks if they can message that out. So we really appreciate their help along this project. So next I'll go just over generally the type of work that's occurred over the last several months. So the photos here show phase five sidewalk. And so one of the first things we do is remove the sidewalk. So as you can see on the photo on the left, the access ramps, they're pre-built and installed the same day as the concrete is removed. So you can see the access ramp in the photo here. And so that's just sitting there waiting to be installed once once these workers get ready. And then the photo on the right shows what it looks like once they're installed. We make sure to provide access to every single business and work with them to ensure that the access that they need is provided. Once the sidewalk is removed, we start to install the items that would be needed for the project. So this typically includes trenching for electrical, water, and communication cables to be able to power streetlights, supply the irrigation system, and then connect the smart features like kiosks and traffic analytics. And then the photo on the right shows holes that are being augured for the installation of pedestrian and streetlight pole foundations, which will then eventually house the actual streetlights. After all the subsurface work is completed, we then grade the area for installation of sidewalk. After grading, we form the sidewalk and start to pour. Again, working with OCA, we tried to accommodate the business owner requests so that in fact, full work is limited to their slow times or when they're closed. We leverage the fact that we could work weekends, start early, work late to try to work around business schedules. Typically, we're able to pour about half a block or more per day and then it opened up for use within two to three days after it had time to cure. In addition to sidewalk, we also need to form and pour the bio-retention basins, as I mentioned earlier, at some of the corners. So the photo on the left shows the formwork and then photo on the right shows the completed pore. And then, as you can see, we leave box outs for certain infrastructures. So some of this will be utility boxes. This is going to be a street or a tree. And then finally, here are some photos of what the area looks like right after the pore is completed. Again, we wait a few days for the concrete to set and then open it up for public use. So we did encounter several challenges with this project, including the vast amount of underground utilities. So Middlefield Road has been around for several decades and in that time, several utilities have been installed. One of those included AT&T, which had a vault in phase five. So this is right near Fifth Avenue. The AT&T vault was outdated, undersized for the needs, and so they needed to upgrade it. You can see on the photo on the left, this is what the vault looked like and they basically continued to feed wires through that where it just ended up being a jumbled mess. So they took this opportunity to revise and reconfigure the layout of their vault to allow for future improvements, future upgrades, easier access, things like that. Unfortunately, this is not something we knew during design and so this was a potential conflict for us. We we worked with AT&T to make sure that they were able to get out there and get it done as quickly as possible. But it did have a delay to some of the work that we were doing in that area. Fortunately for us, there's were plenty of work in other areas and so we made sure that our contractor moved to those areas to stay busy. So this is just some photos of how the built, how the vault was constructed. So they built around the existing wires that were kept live and they built it from the ground up. So first they went ahead and excavated the area, shored it up, and then they poured the foundation. And then generally what they do is build a box around that and then pour it in place. And so this photo just shows them building the walls. As you can see, the existing cables are running out. So they're working around all that kind of infrastructure. And then finally, the top is poured, including new access manholes for future maintenance and inspection. And again, the department worked with AT&T to ensure that they were able to complete their work as quickly as possible. And we moved our contractor to other areas. And finally, this is what it looks like before paving. These vaults end up getting raised and this is how These vaults end up getting raised and this is how they access it for future maintenance. One of the last things that we did was paving of the roadway to the new elevation. So we took this opportunity to reduce the crown or cross slope of Middlefield. And so that's done by first removing the roadway down to the subbase. So the photo on the left shows phase one where the existing concrete and roadway was removed down to the subbase. We then come in and grade it to an elevation, rebuild the subbase and base. We also come down and like pavement fabric. So this is just a tool we have that gives us a little bit more redundancy in our work. Uh, being able to install the, the fabric um, allows us to not have to use as much asphalt concrete and it prevents cracking. And helps increase the longevity of the roadway. Once all that is installed, we go in and pave. So this shows just some of the paving work that occurred. Finally, we go in and roll, make sure it's nice and compact and meets our spec. And so you can see here are uh, the, the phases and how much we actually went down from the existing elevation. So because we had to do this in phases, we would cone off certain areas and then we would come back. And when we grind the other side of the road, we would match this elevation. And then uh, there is one final phase of paving that is played, that is planned and it's going to be occurring in the next couple of weeks and I'll be talking about that shortly. Another big challenge for us is working around the railroad and the underground installation of utilities. We have several locations near the railroad where we need to cross underneath. And that's managed by Union Pacific Railroad. Unfortunately, they're not the easiest people to work with and definitely challenging getting through some of the permits, requirements, things like that. So this first set of photos includes the crossing for the sanitary sewer work that was recently, recently completed. In order to complete this work, we needed to install a temporary bypass system where we would pump the sewage away from the railroad and back to an operator, operational sewer system. So that's what the situation here is on the left. It's a big pump. This was run twenty four seven. And needed to be maintained. Uh, we had people going in on all hours of the night, just making sure that it was working so that we had no overflows. As far as the jack and bore work, first thing we do is we excavate a pit. And shore it up and it's not easily relevant by this photo, but this pit is about the size of a bus. Once the pit is excavated, we go ahead and lower the equipment in. So this is a jack and boring machine. Uh, runs off of uh, rails and basically what we're doing is we're drilling a hole underneath the railroad. I believe this was about ten feet underneath the tracks. And so you start off with drawing a small pilot hole and then see where it ends up on the receiving pit, which is a smaller sized pit on the other end of the tracks, just making sure that our alignment is good. And then once the alignment is established, they go in and actually drill a hole and put in a steel casing that then will be used to install our infrastructure through. Once the casing is installed, we go ahead and put our sewer line through it. And so the photo on the left shows some of the gentlemen installing the sewer line. And then you see these black uh, spacers on the sewer line. These are installed to make sure that the pipe is centered within the larger casing. Once the sewer line is through the railroad section, we go ahead and connect it to our existing sewer. And then at that point, we're able to remove the bypass system and go back on to gravity flow. As you can see, we've been very busy over the last several months. And next I want to address some of the challenges that we faced with this project. So obviously the first is working around community needs for access and trying to limit impacts. As many of you are aware, the project has taken much longer than any would have liked. And throughout the process, we've tried to be transparent on our progress and future planned work. We leveraged our O C A group to do be our outreach and work with property owners along the way. Um, I'd really want to thank everybody's patience and assure you were really close to fin- finish line on this. Um, another challenge is just working with uh, the railroad, which includes Union Pacific Railroad as well as um, Sam Trans. For the railroad crossing, um, like I said, they have a lot of strict requirements for us to work through. And recently we were informed by U P R R that some of the flaggers needed for the project are not available. And so we're going to be working over the next couple of days to resolve this issue. However, this may delay the crossing of the tracks for potentially about a month, which is the work that we were planning to do this week. So even when we seem, seems like we have everything in line with Union Pacific Railroad, um, they came in at the last minute and kind of changed our plans. Um, so we are working through this. We're going to be working with the CEO's office and our team and our director. Um, we have a call scheduled with them tomorrow to see what we can do to escalate the issue and make sure that we get flaggers on the site. And then finally, it is rainy season. Uh, we got the first taste of it earlier this week. Uh, luckily the storm wasn't as big as it was planned out to me, but we are worried a little bit about the weather. Um, last year we lost about three months of potential work window due to weather, due to the constant rain. We're tracking the weather uh, daily and we make sure to get weather updates from the National Weather Service. And weather has the potential to delay our completion of our project. So what we've been told is it is going to be a weather than normal year, an El Nino year. However, it is supposed to come a little bit later in the year. So towards the end of the year, December, January, February is really when we're getting at some of the storms. And we feel pretty confident we'll be fairly complete with the project by then. I do also want to highlight some of our accomplishments. So some of the things that we were able to complete was the majority of the concrete. Again, only one phase remains, which is some area that we actually added to the project, which is phase nine by the barbecue by Capella's barbecue. We've been completed installation of all the streetlight and pedestrian lights. And while they're not connected to power you yet, um, we're glad to get those in and so you guys can get a feel of how that would look. And then we have been able to complete the uh, sanitary sewer jack and bore, which allows us to complete all our sewer work and get that back on a gravity speed. So we are close, but we are not done. And so we do have some remaining work that needs to get us to the finish line. We want to be able to focus on that over the next two months. So that includes two more jack and bores, including one on Middlefield. And like I said, one on Redwood Junction. Again, based on the information we received from U P R R this morning, uh, the Middlefield Crossing is looking to be delayed, but we're working to see what we can do to resolve that. Landscaping is one of the next things that we're going to be doing and one of the last things we do on a project due to just the fact of having needing to have irrigation installed as well as the maintenance requirements once trees and landscaping is planted. But I'm happy to share that you should see some landscape landscaping being installed soon and the trees are in route to be installed as well. Side amenities should also start being installed soon. So this will include solar powered benches where you can take a break and power your phone, bike racks, trash receptacles. And as well as some of the smart features, so um, smart parking analytics and kiosks as well. And then finally, um, one area that I do want to touch on in a little bit of more detail is we do have some final paving that's going to be scheduled towards the end of this month and into the first week of December. Based on the impacts of paving operation, the traffic businesses, we made the decision to do this work at night. And additionally, talking with the contractor, they believe that they can actually complete the work faster and in a shorter duration if they're able to do it at night. And this is due to not having to work around pedestrians and vehicular traffic. So the work will be done over six nights and it'll typically start around seven P M and then be completed by five A M for the morning commute. I'd like to note that there will be increased noise and some of the homes on the side streets will be affected by the work. However, we will believe it's going to be less overall impact and disturbance than if we were doing, doing it during the days. Some of the challenges of doing it during the days is it would cut off access to several blocks at a time. Um, this would be both vehicular and pedestrian. As we try to keep the area um, clear for the contractor and so definitely uh, one of the main factors, we decided to shift it to night paving. Biggest concern for us in that is that paving is weather dependent, not only on rain, but also temperature. So if it gets a little too cold or if we have a rain event, this timing will likely need to change. Again, we're tracking the weather daily and we'll make that decision um, as we get closer to that November twenty seventh date. Finally, if the paving moves forward as planned, we plan to have the final striping of the roadway scheduled for Friday, December eighth. So this is when we'll stripe the roadway to the final configuration, which will include the one way in each direction, parallel parking and then the center turn lane. Um, and again, uh, striping is contingent on weather. So depending on how that looks, we do need a couple of days for the pavement to dry out. Um, some of that may be pushed back if we start to get some more frequent and steady rain. Next few slides are just going to show some of the trees that we approved for the project. And so this is the Ginkgo Biloba tree or an autumn gold. So these are going to be installed at various places along the corridor. And then another tree that we are going to include is the Acer Reuben Redpoint or the Northwest Shade Tree. So again, these are en route from the various nurseries. Couple of them are coming from Oregon and so they should be here within the next couple of weeks and then we'll be working to install those. So as always, I want to remind everybody to slow for the come zone. We've been fortunate to not have any major accidents on the job and we want to keep it that way. Safety is always going to be our number one priority. Please be aware of the lane configurations, especially in early December, when the paving goes down and the new lane configurations are installed. And then again, we want to thank you for your patience as we work on this project. We're close to the finish line, but we're not there just yet. So we are going to continue our focus and efforts to ensure that we can complete this project as soon as we can. Next slide just shows some of the contact information that I wanted to share with you. Uh, middlefieldroad.org is going to be the best resource for updates on the project. We update that frequently, identify anticipating anticipated network, next work, uh, detours, things like that. If you have questions related to construction, you can give D P W a call or email us at the project email address. And then any other questions related to issues on Middlefield Road can be real uh, referenced to the Community Fairs Office at that number below. And so that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thanks very much, Kristoff. Do we have questions from council members?
So uh, Kristoff, thank you very much. Um, just want to make a couple of comments. Um, I've been riding on Middlefield Road on my bicycle for the last six months. So I've seen a lot of really amazing progress over there. And so I'm very excited to finally get bike lanes. That, that's going to be a very big one for me. So thank you very much for that. Couple of things I noticed during the construction, obviously we can't do anything about it now, but uh, it probably was due to a lot of the shifting, but there were definitely times when it was easier with the pedestrian and bicycle access um, to make it through there. And then when they shifted blocks or something, that access would get uh, removed or rerouted somewhere completely different and it made it um, quite challenging to navigate through. Um, fortunately, I'm comfortable enough that I was able to go and I, I went without any real trouble with the traffic and all that. So less the stop signs in the intersections, but more of sometimes there was a pedestrian way and sometimes there wasn't. Um, so just wanted to kind of give you guys some feedback on that one. So um, but I do definitely appreciate the, the attempt and the concerns there. Um, and then the other one is like I said, I'm looking forward to the striping. Looking forward to that. Have we checked and made sure that there's enough space on both sides for the uh, parked cars and giving enough space like they have to open doors or into the bike lane as well as the moving traffic lanes? Um, I'm not sure what the width and the, the separation is for the bike lanes from the original project.
Yeah, I don't have the dimensions in front of me, but there is a buffer between the parallel parking and the bike lane. So that door zone looks to have um, okay, maybe a one to three foot buffer. It's hard to tell from the, the photo I have here, but there is a buffer there.
Thank you.
Uh, Blair, go ahead, please.
Thank you. That was a very detailed presentation. The A T and T thing, I, I appreciate that wasn't anticipated. I'm wondering about Comcast. And are they definitely going to be undergrounded too? And I signed up for like Sonic like three or four years ago and they just called me up and installed it last Friday. Um, so it used to be a monopoly or duopoly and now there's maybe some other choices. Is there like a a conduit where some of these new competing internet providers can pull cables or do they have to pay a tariff to A T and T to go through theirs? Cause I, I think we want to future proof this and not have someone tear up the street again. Or Comcast, some independent contractor installer just run some cables uh, in the sky because no one's doing it late at night, who knows?
Yeah, so we included conduits for everybody that's been existing on the cor- on the corridor. We have agreements with them. We also did include spare conduits for future proofing. And uh, typically I think um, though there will be an opportunity for that um, I, I think typically what happens is there's usually like one or two main runs and everybody kind of piggybacks off of that and, and pulls their service from there, but there is uh, redundancy in our joint trench for, for future proofing.
Um, and, and a follow up, I, I sometimes don't trust these utilities like um, in front of my five unit apartment building, there was this big gray box for A T and T. And they decided to improve it, put another one for fiber optics. So they didn't take out the one, they just put two giant boxes, take up half the sidewalk right in front of my bedroom. You, you wouldn't do that in a rich neighborhood, but by apartment building in North Oaks, they get away with shit of stuff like that. Um, and I'm just concerned they have sort of like this easement because it's a public utility that they can swoop in and do these expedient things. And I want to make sure that Middlefield, after all this investment is off limits. We don't end up with big ugly utility boxes thrown around that it's no, no, no overhead wires, no, you know. I'm, I'm just a little worried about that and I I don't entirely trust P G N E to actually remove all the, the poles. I I think they might like, oh, that, that was here before us. We don't want to take this one out. I don't know. I'm kind of cynical.
Yeah, so we do have, uh, we did establish an underground district as part of this project that includes limits that go all the way, like I said, to MacArthur to Fifth. And so anybody within that underground district will need to go underground. P G and E will be required and they're typically the first ones to go. Um, and then all the rest of the utilities will start kind of popping off. So P G and E is usually the one on top of the joint pole or wooden poles you see along the corridor. They'll come in, pull their wires underground, connect all the businesses and, and any homes along Middlefield. Test energize that and then they'll pull their overhead wires and top the pole. And then the subsequent utilities will be required to kind of go, you know, the last, last man on the pole needs to remove the poles and then patch the sidewalk. And so we have agreements with every single utility that's on the pole now that they need to do that. And we're working with A T and T to get them out there as soon as, as we're done with our joint trench and they have a clear run. Uh, we also manage the encroachment permits for Middlefield Road. So any kind of future utility work needs to go through our office for an encouragement permit. And so we would not allow um, what you were saying about just adding boxes kind of anywhere. They'll need to do something that makes sense for the overall corridor. So we would be likely uh, not approving any kind of that, any work like that.
Um, quick follow up on, on the comment that you made there. You said that the last person through would do a patch job. Would that be to the standard of what's being built now? Or is it just kind of they're going to throw some filler and, and smooth it down? And leave it. Cause I've seen a, a couple of those happen on Middlefield on the Redwood City side.
Yeah, no, eventually when everything pulls out, we'll, we'll match existing. So it'll, in most cases, it'll be a concrete patch and we make them patch up to the nearest score line. So that way it looks, you know, nice and clean and not hokey.
Great.
Other questions from council members?
Um, I know it's really hard to, oh, thank you for your presentation. I know it's really hard to judge or, or even guess at this point, but is there any other big disruption that might come from the work, whether it's P G and E or um, you know, anything that um, uh, business owners or people can anticipate that might, you know, just put a little dent in some of this for some period of time. You know, and anything really big is, is P G and E is what they have to do fairly straightforward and simple and won't cause um, any traffic issues?
Yeah, P G needs will work is much more straightforward. So let me, let me take a step back. As far as our project work, the most disruptive remaining work is going to be the paving. And so again, that's why we decided to do it at night to try to limit that. Once the paving is done, we'll, we'll continue to do work, but it'll be more isolated. So it'll be kind of a smaller crew working to install a tree or a bench and things like that. And I think the potential impacts is maybe a couple of parking spots or maybe a, like a small area where you, where cars have to move around until that work is done. P G needs work um, is going to be a little bit more invasive, but still not to the extent of our overall projects. So what they're going to be doing is pulling wires from, from uh, box to box. And typically that's going to be like on a block by block basis. And what they told us is what they typically do is they'll um, take over the like middle lane from between a block. And so cars will still be able to pass on, you know, going north, going south. They'll kind of take that middle lane. They'll kind of take that middle lane as they pull wire and they feel like they can do a block a day. And so within two, three weeks, they'll be done pulling their wire. And then after that, it's it's again, just the individual homes or businesses that will need to be connected. And that will be much less impacted and off the roadway.
Okay, next question. Is there any I any chance of getting any sort of calendar in terms of understanding when? Some of the beautification things will happen like when the trees will get planted. And my question has more to do with. We're been kind of all been thinking outside the box about how to. Beautify things a little bit more along Middlefield Road. And I know at one time there was talk of lights in the trees. And so. Trying to anticipate when that might happen. So we're jumping on it sooner so we can. Get Middlefield Road looking the way. We all, you know, are hopeful that it will look with all this work that you guys have been doing. And then subsequent to that, at what point should we be thinking about? Trying to get outdoor dining permits for the businesses along Middlefield Road. So that we can kind of coordinate. I don't want to get it all done and then have another year that. Businesses have to wait before they can pull tables and chairs outside. I feel like we. Might want to jump on that sooner. And I know that's not public works, but it's just a comment in terms of. Having the project all come together in a way. As quickly as possible at the same time, I guess, is what I'm. Looking for. And it might just be another conversation for this group, but.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I can definitely speak on Middlefield Road. Again, the website's going to be the best source for updates. We we have a two week look ahead there. So we identify. What we're doing on a two week basis. I think there's also a quarterly newsletter going out that our OCA department sends out. I don't know if that's gone out or not, but that typically has some. More of the longer terms. Scheduling items, but right now our our plan is to start the landscaping work. In the next two, three weeks, so end of November, early December. And then it'll probably take two to three weeks to install that. As far as the dining permit, to to your point, it's not a public works initiative, but I know there's been discussions and I think that's maybe something. That the county manager's office or maybe OCA would be better suited to to speak to where we are on that.
Thank you.
Juan Carlos, go ahead, please.
Oh, yeah, through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. Can you also let us know what stage? Will the Wi-Fi be out and about? Is that considered still stage nine or is that stage 10 when that will be functional?
So Wi-Fi is going to be a little bit further out. Once we're done with the project, they're going to need to go ahead and pull all the wire through similar to what PG&E does. So Wi-Fi will probably, I I don't have an exact schedule. That's actually work that we're coordinating with our. ISD department. I can circle back with you guys and get you a more date, but. It won't likely happen until 2024, the middle of 2024 later.
So it's not considered part of the final project? Is that what you're telling us?
No, it just has to wait for the project to be completed and then they have to pull wire, but PG&E goes first. So we have to wait till PG&E does. All of their work because they're going to pull the electrical. And it needs that to be powered. So we're going to have to wait for PG&E to complete their work. They can pull some of the wire in parallel, but it's got it's on a longer horizon than. Our general project, which is, you know, scheduled to be completed end of this year.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And and you said that PG&E maybe take up to 18 months to finish that?
Eighteen months is what we've seen with other jurisdictions that have done a similar project from when the project is completed to when the polls go down. And typically it's a combination of PG&E and the other utilities, so like AT&T and Comcast. I think PG&E. As long as they don't have any other. Critical needs that they need to get to. So wildfires, if we have another huge storm, you know, they pull all their crews in support of their efforts there. They said that they can do their work. Within one to two months. And then we'll work with all the other utilities to kind of come in and start pulling the rest of their stuff, but it's really on the utility's schedule. And, you know, we we coordinate with them. We. We have periodic meetings and are letting them know that we're getting ready to finish. But it's going to be on the schedule of the specific utility of when they can get out there and. Pull wire through the underground system and then remove their overhead.
Thank you for the time clarification.
Any other, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Kristoff, for your presentation. One question I had was in regards to the stop signs. Right now it feels like there's a thousand one at each corner. And I don't, I don't mind. I know, you know, they say for the better. But I'm wondering if. The. The stop signs are going to remain where they're at. I can't remember if there was. A planned. An electric signal or a light. Somewhere along there.
We're we're adding a new light at Pacific. And then the other crossings are getting those flash and beacon beacons. So if you've seen kind of those pedestrian crossings where you push it and they kind of do like a. Like a zigzag pattern. Those are actually solar powered. And so once we're done with the striping, my understanding is we're going to go in and put in. All of the regular signage and then remove the stop signs so that it is not on a block by block basis.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other Mariella, please?
Hi, thank you, Kristoff. I would just like a little bit of clarity as in. Time wise, when will this all be completed? And I know it keeps changing, but as of now, the absolute completion of the project. Is that correct?
Correct. So we're shooting for the end of 2024. To be substantially complete, meaning no major disruption work. There's a few areas that are off of the main corridor, so like the entrance to the health clinic. And then again, some of the amenities that are going to be installed, that might. Go into early 2024, but we feel pretty confident by that by, you know, the middle of January, we'll we'll be complete with the project. Again, weather is going to be our biggest risk right now. There's certain things we can do when it rains and then there's certain things we can't. And then this UPRR railroad issue that we're going to be working through in the next few days has a potential for a delay. So we'll have to see kind of how that pans out.
Hi, Kristoff. My name's Kelly. I'm new, so forgive me for a question that perhaps seems fairly. Basic and you've probably answered before. This has all been extraordinarily helpful and was super interesting and fascinating. Thank you for all of the great slides. What was the original timeline and estimated completion of this project? I'm just trying to estimate. Where it started and and where we're at.
I think we're about a year behind schedule. The original completion was supposed to be, if I'm remembering correctly, like October, November of 2022.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Go ahead, Blair.
I just want to add on, it was originally like 18 million and like. Two years. And then it ballooned in the county. Increased the budget for the lowest responsible bidder Granite Rock Construction. And so I think it's up to 24 million million or. The the board of supervisors voted out the changes as needed. And then the timeline kept growing. But it's the first time in the entire Bay Area I've ever heard of businesses being compensated for disruption. When they tore Mission Street downtown, it sounds like no one got anything.
What has it taken this long?
It's it's the first combination, I think, of COVID and especially of. At risk community and a a very strong supervisor that stood up for us and said. These people suffered through COVID and they're just barely hanging on by their fingernails. We need to do something and misery money. But it's the first time the whole Bay Area, it might be the whole state. It's it's very unheard of. Destruction, display disruptions to businesses.
Just have a couple of quick ones for you, Kristoff. So if I understand the the pulling of the cables and that sort of thing, PG&E goes first, their highest on the power pole. It takes them one to two months to do that. The sense that I have is that it takes each carrier the same amount of time they're doing. They're working the same process. So we've got six, eight carriers on there. They're each going to take a month to two months to pull their lines through the conduit. Is that correct? I'm just trying to understand the timeline and how that works.
Yeah, I think the timelines are a little bit different, you know, based on how much they have, where their runs are, but generally I think it'd be safe to say that.
Okay. How long does it take to take the power poles down? Once the once the line? Once the last carrier is off there, how long is that process going to take? Any idea?
I think that we could probably get that accomplished or the last carrier can get that accomplished in about a week.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward. I mean, they they basically bring a crane. You know, they get topped, which means they get cut shorter. So they're not going to be nearly as tall as what you see now because once. The utilities removed, they basically cut off that section. And then. Yeah, between between that, I would say one to two weeks at the most, they'll they'll all be out and.
So the time is really just the time it takes carriers to pull the lines through, not break them. It's a delicate process kind of thing, I guess, set in.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's not only, you know, they have to pull it north, south, and then they have to do all of the connections to the individual businesses, which are now going to be from under. Instead of being overhead, they're going to be underground. And so that takes some time as well.
And finally, other question was, has the neighborhood? Have the residential neighborhoods been notified about the i-paving that? You know, it's going to be noisy for about a week or so, something like that. I don't know if OCA has done that or if public works or.
Yeah, in combination with OCA, we we sent it out on the flyer and I know that there's an effort going around to make. Make sure that we notify. We're going to be posting on next door. So we're going to be trying to do all of our available channels to inform people of the work. So that it doesn't surprise.
I'm sure people will appreciate that. Are there any other questions from council members?
Um, just to clarify something because I think I misheard something. If you were to. In a perfect world, perfect world, the. Benches, trees, lighting, stop sign, stuff that will. Make a more uniform Middlefield Road for everybody to travel down and look nice regardless of any underground. Wires that have to be pulled, things like that, that don't really affect the appearance. And it looks like it's kind of complete. We're not talking 18 months for that. We're talking the next few months, correct?
Yeah, end of the year for all of that. Yeah, and and more likely in the middle of December, the majority, you'll see that 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 stuff will go in fairly quickly. You'll see it going in over the next couple of weeks and.
Hey, if there are no further council questions, do we have any public comment?
Justin actually had his hand up earlier. Justin, did you have a comment to make?
Thanks. Yeah, I think I was going to respond to what I thought was a question for the county executive's office. Now I can't remember what it was. I apologize.
I know, that was like earlier.
Sidewalk dining thing.
Yes, yes, of course. Thank you for that. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that outdoor dining was not part of the design for the Middlefield Road. Project, but we have heard, I believe, through the North Fair Oaks Community Council and elsewhere that there may be some interest in it. So that's something we're taking a look at, but I just wanted to to clarify that's not. Part of the design. It's something we'll be looking at and of course. Identifying not only the demand for it and interest in it, but also things like, you know, ADA accessibility on the sidewalk and all those components of it. So it's something we're we're taking a look at now.
Well, thanks very much, Justin. And thank you very much, Kristoff, for your presentation tonight and your support keeping so today throughout this project.
Yep, glad to be here with you guys. You guys have a great night.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number six, garbage rate increase. Presentation's going to be given by Lillian Clark, the Office of Sustainability. Lillian?
I'll let you know. It's the next slide. Well, we're going to end this with the most exciting topic of the evening. In 2024, North Fair Oaks, garbage and recycling rates. So good evening, members of the council staff and community. My name is Lillian Clark. I'm here with my colleague, Anthony Guerrero. And we also have our colleagues from Recology here tonight. I'm pleased to be here with you this evening to present the 2024 proposed garbage and recycling rates for North Fair Oaks. If you go to the next slide. The area. In blue that has the red circle is the North Fair Oaks area. As you can see, we also manage other areas. We call it the county franchise area. And those are the other areas indicating. All of these blue areas are part of the SBW service area. Exciting. So the county's role in the SBW is we set rates annually. We ensure the contractor, ecology, complies with the franchise agreement for our two service areas. We make program recommendations and conduct special events such as the shredding event we held this year in North Fair Oaks. That many of you attended. We manage customer feedback regarding services at the curve or. The legal dumping, OPI to pick up. We are one member of an 11 member agency in the SBWMA. We were 12 when we started. And then half of it withdrew and they're now part of the Greenpeace Recovery. Excite. So I thought it was important to share to kind of show you where we come from and where we are. If you look to the far right of the graph, you can see a 12.7% in 2010. Well, 2010 is when we had the new contracts. For both SBR, ecology. And so in order to get our rates for the new services, we had to increase our rates. But as you can see. We've pretty much increased rates to meet the CPI indexes and consumer price indexes. And those indexes for garbage are based on fuel, labor. And there's a few other indexes that both the garbage company and Shoreway uses in their calculations. But I want to point out. In 21 and 22ish. During the pandemic, we held rates steady. We actually used. A reserve to to buy to to buy down any of the rate increases that. The consumer price indexes. So we held rates steady. Then last year, we increased the rates 2% because we anticipated there was going to be a new contractor for Shoreway. And then. This rate year, they actually have all the calculations for us, which we're going to present to you in a few minutes. So. Now, the other thing I want to point out is. On the graph, the orange bar that is shown is the commercial rates. And the last time that we actually increased any commercial bin rates was in 2010. The the remaining orange bars since 2010 have been for the 32 gallon garbage cart that commercial customers use. So we haven't actually increased the 64 and the 96 of the bin rates since 2010 for commercial customers. Next slide, please. So every year, we go through this rate setting process. And actually, what we do is the manual audit of the revenue cost. We apply the indices such as C P I. The contractors such as Recology or the processor at Shoreway, S B W M A, um, all combine their data into one report. And then we annually audit these reports. The S B W A allocates the cost to the member agencies, and how they allocate costs is based on your subscription levels. So they look at how many carts, bins, labors. All those things kind of factor into what your allocation of the of the costs are going to be for the entire agency. And then it's applied accordingly. So the contractors um, apply indices like I mentioned earlier, such as consumer price index for labor and fuel. And that's primarily Recology's cost. So if you think about a garbage truck, they come to your house, they pick up your car. You have a driver, you have a truck, you have fuel, right? So you have labor, fuel, and the truck cost. So that's primarily what the Recology's costs are. And then this year, the fuel index for um, garbage companies, it's a fuel index specifically for this type of work. It went up forty point six percent because of fuel prices. So just to let you know. And then labor costs for the garbage industry went up four point three percent because they again have their own indices between the the index. And then we also take a look at the revenue surplus and shortfall. So um, that is calculated every two years where they tell us uh, if we had brought in enough revenue to cover our costs. That revenue can be affected like during the pandemic when commercial businesses have canceled their binsers because they're no longer at that location. So you can set your rates at the beginning of the year, but a lot of factors can impact that revenue by the end of the year. If if there's a lot of fluctuations in in what the commercial services are doing in the service area. And then finally, we make re- great recommendations to our board after we do all our analysis, looking at all the reports. Go ahead, go to the next slide. So here's a brief summary of this year's collection costs and revenue requirements. The collection revenue is the revenue projection by the S B W M A, like I mentioned earlier. This revenue is collected by Recology on our behalf, and it also is from the tax rule charges. Um, and then commercial customers or any other services, folks at backyards or locks, all that's kind of factored in. As you can see from the table, Recology's compensation increased seven point nine percent, seven point nine nine this calendar year from the cost projected last year, and this is due primarily to those two indexes, labor and fuel. Disposal and processing only increased twenty seven percent. And this is due to a number of cost increases. The first is the contract with S B R expired. And um, we have a new contractor, S B I. Typically, for Shoreway, they only, uh, these contracts are typically only for ten years because the industry changes so much, right? Processings change, shortlines change, um, materials go to different places, so they keep these contracts longer, whereas Recology's contract is through twenty thirty five. Um. And so the contract expired, and then S B W M A conducted an R F P process, and the new contractor, S B I, was selected to operate the site due to consumer price indexes and the new contract. Um, and all the proposed bids, similar cost increases were amongst all the bids that we received. So some of the cost components for Shoreway, just to kind of let you know what goes into the shore rate cost, and do you all know where Shoreway is? It's right off of the one oh one over by the San Carlos airport. Yeah. So that is part of the S B W M A. So we manage that site and all of the programs there in addition to what Recology provides to you at your curb. So the cost components for Shoreway are labor, obviously because there's folks there sorting, managing the site, fuel, because they need all this fuel to process, bring stuff to the landfill, bring it to processing centers. Power is a big one. Maintenance and operation of equipment. Um, and then included in this is also the S B W M A's costs. So for their programs and administration, property insurance, and this increased significantly due to the fires caused from batteries placed inside recycling carts, which end up on these shortlines, and we've had some fires. So to remind everyone during this holiday season, your Hallmark cards that have that, you know, sing and dance or do whatever, take the battery out, make sure you tape it and put it in a plastic bag, toys. Put those batteries in a plastic bag. Everything needs to go in a plastic bag. The terminals need to be taped, and it should go on top of your black garbage cart. Not into the carts, because it causes fires at Shoreway. So just a little holiday. And then there's also maintenance of the site, right? And with the new contractor coming in, we've had to do additional maintenance to accommodate the new contractor. Um, Recology, am I missing anything? Okay, great. Next slide. So to kind of point out here, for our minimum level of service that we put on the tax rule, we kind of just choose those to explain here tonight. Um. Remember, you get two thirty-two gallon cans at the curb or one sixty-four. So we have about a hundred and forty-four customers that get the thirty-twos, and we have two thousand four hundred and seventy-six residential customers that get the sixty-four. There are some twenty gallon customers out there, but they don't get a review straight. It's they can have a smaller card if they need it. Um, and so to provide that service, right now you're paying thirty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents a month. And the actual cost to provide service for a twenty gallon card is fifty-six dollars. Um, a thirty-two gallon is fifty-nine, and a sixty-four should actually cost sixty-seven dollars a month. Next slide, please. So on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, the S B W M A report indicated we needed a nineteen point three percent revenue increase to meet our rates in in our service area. And at the same board meeting, the S B W M A board voted to use the one-time rate stabilization. This reduced the overall revenue requirement for this calendar year to sixteen point nine. So the county further evaluated, and um, we are exercising in the Recology franchise agreement, uh, a provision that allows us to cap certain indexes and carry forward a a little bit of the balance. And so our board approved us to do this, and so that passed on Tuesday. So we will be using this cap and carry forward to kind of um, stabilize these rates over two years rather than increasing up to sixteen point nine percent revenue here. Um, and the final step the county has taken is we're using a a a portion of the surplus that was identified in the report to buy down the rate additionally. Um, the one thing I want to point out, using the rate stabilization fund this year is the one time. Right? So they had some reserves. They allowed us to use it. So that's only for one rate. That doesn't mean it's going to occur at next year. So we have to get our rates to the revenue cost that I've shown earlier. Um. Okay, so. Next slide, please. So this is what we're proposing for North Fair Oaks. We decided with the cap carry forward, the rate stabilizations of shortfall, we got it to where we were comfortable with a twelve point seven percent rate increase. Um, and again, we don't anticipate it's going to be twelve point seven next year. I mean, we have the carry forward, we'll have some other indexes that may be applied depending on how the cost of living goes. Um, and will be a lot less than that next year, but we we wanted to get the bulk of it this year because we have had a number of years without any rate increases, so we have to get that revenue back up. So um, the proposed change for the two thirty-twos or the one sixty-four, um, one to four residential dogmies, those are basically the ones that New Orleans actually will will increase to four sixty-seven per month, or will increase four sixty-seven, representing an increase in monthly charges from thirty-six seventy-nine to forty-one, forty-six. That's about sixty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents a year. So you'll see an increase of sixty. Next slide. Now for the good. Anthony is going to share.
Thank you. Um, so these rates help pay for a variety of things, uh, Recology programs. So of course you have the Recology trucks out there every week, uh, depending on your service day, picking up residential garbage, recycling, organics, and also commercial. Uh, but then you also, the rates also pay for disposal fees and handling costs of those materials. Uh, the on-call bulky waste collection program, uh, which is two times per year for residents. And then also, uh, Lillian mentioned the battery collection program, uh, they put on top of um, their garbage cart and then oil filters, Christmas trees are coming up in January. I think Recology comes, things like a two-week window uh, in January, and they usually send out a mailer, so letting residents know. They also, um, or the rates also pay for illegal dumping, uh, the shredding event and uh, services at Shoreway. So there's uh, free drop-off for recycling, paints, mattresses, cooking, motor oil, electronics, small appliances. Next slide, please. And uh, S B thirteen eighty-three rolled out a few years ago, and uh, there's a few requirements that started, you know, back then, and then, you know, things are just kind of phased in. But some of the programs or some of the requirements that uh, the county is is uh, going through right now is so for for residents, uh, they're going to have to, or they have to uh, subscribe to organics collection, but then they also have to sort organics. So it's not just having the car outside of the the house. They have to sort their material appropriately. And then for businesses, um, it's the same deal. They have to subscribe to to organic services, or they can also sell hall. So they have the option to take their organic material and take it to a facility for for composting. But then there's uh, there's all the process behind that. So they have to show receipts or keep receipts and then submit that. So we know that, you know, there are compliance. Next slide, please. And then we have our our phone number, our our um, our website where you could find more information on on these programs, and then uh, Recology's information is there too, so they have a lot of uh, information there. And that's my email address. Do you have any questions?
Great question. That's the one from the family, by the way.
Is there any question?
Okay, I'm going to take a picture of the email address.
I'm more curious than anything else to, let's say, a neighbor, a neighboring city. How do our rates compare? Do the cities have better ability to negotiate versus an unincorporated?
Yeah, so this is how it works. You know, we get this question a lot, um, especially we get it a lot up in Emerald Hills because Redwood City will have one way for a twenty gallon, and then we have a different rate. So what happens is, if we go back to that previous slide of cost, if you can go back. Keep going. The next one. Yeah, so again, our goal is to bring in the revenue, right? Your costs are your costs. How you get there? Whether, you know, that's up to each individual jurisdiction, right? So in our service areas, we don't want our commercial customers subsidizing our residential customers, so we try to get our rates to the actual cost of service, which is following the proctuating process. Getting your 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 fees to where they need to be. How other cities do it, that's up to each city to set those rates. So don't pay attention to their, I mean, the rate, everybody charges different rates. They all need to get to their costs.
So, uh, speaking of costs, how much input or recommendations do we get in terms of controlling it? So one of the things you mentioned for both of the contractors is that fuel is a huge cost. Are there initiatives to encourage solar, E V, something like that?
You want to talk about that, John? You can talk about your little tour today on a truck.
Good evening, John's run, Joan manager for Recology San Mateo. Yeah, Ross, he's our community development dancer. What's your question? Uh, there's a new law in California. All trucks have to be electrified by twenty thirty-six.
Hmm.
Uh, right now, we run a hundred percent renewable diesel, which has a cleaner, it's one for the C and G.
But does that cost more than the E V or?
The, in fact, we just had a hundred percent electric truck last weekend. We demoed. That's the third time we've demoed it over the last three years. The first two years, it didn't make it past five hours on the bus. This one actually performed well, uh, finished around six hours, had forty percent battery. Um, it's very quiet. Um, so it worked well. The downside right now, until they get perfection, it's still the cost of a regular garbage truck.
Right.
A new truck now, about four hundred and fifty thousand. This prototype, if you bought it today, is eight hundred thousand.
Makes sense.
That doesn't include any of the electrical infrastructure.
Right. But then for the long term, especially if fuel rates keep going up, this would theoretically save or be more cost controlled. Um, especially if you have the fuel like solar generation or other needs to sustain yourself at at something like that.
Yeah, I think it was getting close to the twenty thirty-six, the cost of electric vehicle, as you see cars like Tesla, they're coming down dramatically. And we'll in our meeting today, another avenue is being explored is hydrogen.
I just remember, I think a couple of months ago, we had the um, Sam Trans come out here with their new bus fleet, so similar questions because fuel is getting more expensive. There's a lot of global uncertainty around fuel supplies and costs, so.
Just to let you know, the it Shoreway has solar on it. That's part of it offsets some of the cost. But they are anticipating, um, was it a transformer? P G D has to put, and it's going to take a half acre.
Got it.
To to power all their equipment. So we're hoping technology changes and maybe there's some alternatives beyond because the upgrade to the site is going to be really costly.
And not this location, but other Recology locations should run C and G.
Hmm.
So that's a little price then, that decent.
Got it.
That's a good question. So, yeah.
Okay, just I'm thinking about future rate increases and how we can control the costs or ask to control costs.
A hundred fucking dollar site, I'm not sure.
It's a few million here and there between.
Other questions from council members? Ever, go ahead.
I I do have a couple of questions. Uh, hi, Lillian. Thanks. Uh, thanks for you and your team to come and um, to sit and present.
Nice to see you.
Um, eh, I wanted to ask um, about uh, plastic being repurposed. Is that still not a thing anywhere in the world? And what are we doing with with uh, plastics?
So they're primarily, it's the one and twos, right? Still, the market for plastics. A one, two, and three, and the rest.
Very trash.
A lot of markets, yeah.
Okay.
Remember, we were sending all this stuff over to China.
Right.
And then they covered the China sword, I guess, right? And then they weren't allowing us to import any of our waste, yeah.
Yeah.
So it still hasn't.
Okay, um, and my other question eh, is regarding the sizes of the um, trash cans, and I saw the that the um, I think the twenty gallon is the same as the thirty-two gallon, right? Trash cans, and I saw the, that the, um, I think the twenty gallon is the same as the thirty-two gallon, right?
Yeah, because of the cost, if you look at the cost, if we can go back to the cost. You see the slide? Yeah, so you see, it's fifty-six dollars, right? And so we're anticipating that we're going to set the rates at um.
What do you want?
Sorry. And forty-one, forty, or forty-one, forty-six, so it's. It's still not going to be covering the cost actually to collect that card.
Yeah.
And then it really keeps the illegals up again, and I will say, we are beginning to see a little bit of an increase. Actually, we're beginning to see a little bit of an increase throughout the county. And it's weird stuff. It isn't like the standard stuff, you know, we had somebody's truck rack and. So it requires, you know, or they've been getting a lot of bulky stuff, and so it requires the, you know, a couple of guys to come in up.
Yeah, um, eh, just gonna mention that um. Eh, and that's just a wish that um, I wish that um. Somehow people could be disincentivized, you know, to uh, to get bigger um, trash cans. Or the opposite, you know, um. Entice enticing people to get smaller trash cans so that they either they recycle more. Or they stop, or we stop, you know, over consuming, um. Eh, I guess, you know, that that is an idea that may run contrary with uh, profit as well, you know. Which might be an issue, but at some point, I think we um, all of us have to. Come to terms, you know, with uh, uh, with pollution and figure out the best ways to.
Well, there's an interesting philosophy to it too, ever, cause then, you know, it used to be, like even for an apartment. We would estimate thirty-two gallon because you would be looking at a one-bedroom apartment with two people. That's not the case, and because of the high cost of the area.
Right.
So homes are not just, you know, two people and two children, they're, you know. So, you also have to make sure you have enough garbage service, otherwise it ends up in other folks' carts or in. Bins and commercial businesses, school sites are, uh, you know, they're always hard with something, um, so.
Right, it's it's a fine balance.
Eh, yeah, you have to find that sweet spot to make sure folks are covering. Services here.
Blair?
Um, just a couple of comments. Um, I'm in the apartment complex, so I don't see the rates directly, uh, but if it goes up enough, my landlord will use that as a. Excuse to raise our rent. Um, but it's been stable the last couple of years. Uh, no, my rent, but but when the rents were going, when housing prices were going up, they were raising the rent like fifteen percent every year and. At least during COVID, it's been kind of leveled off, um. That's a real relief for like working people like me, um. We've got like two big blue recycling bins, and then they got a dumpster in a shed. And the garbage, we we put the blue bins on the curb. And they get that on Thursdays and, no, they get that on Tuesdays, and then Thursday, they come and get the dumpster. I I'm always confused about the batteries, um, and. I work at this commercial building, so sometimes they'll just take it to work because it's real simple there, they got all this stuff sorted at Palo Alto, this thing and. Um.
I believe for commercial, you'd have to get a a bucket, right?
They have that at the commercial thing, but. Uh, picture like a couple, five-unit apartment buildings side by side and people just taking their trash out. It'd be nice if they offered the battery buckets for some of these. Medium to small apartment things, because then I could put that on the blue bin. Cause the only thing, where 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 am I going to put it on top of dumpster, are they gonna?
Well, no, they actually give you a bucket, a a bucket for just batteries, and it gets placed next to the garbage, uh, the the big. Four yard or five yard.
And we don't have one in my particular circumstance.
Yeah, so they could, if you're a part of a manager or your landlord can request the battery bucket. There's no charge for it, so the way it works for commercial or for. They recycling, they can get as many recycled containers as they want, um, they need to, and they pay for their solid waste fees. Um, organics or yard waste is is separate, where for residents, you get. One garbage cart, one green cart, one green cart, and that's included in your your base rate.
And I've been to Shoreway and it is a good facility, I've I've taken like an old printer and just put it in the bin. And I even got that organic soil, you can get, uh, you can fill up like two bags and take it back and use it for gardening.
Oh, they want you to do that, right?
It it, I mean, it's it's nice that it's available, um, so I think we have a pretty good setup here in San Mateo County.
Um, thank you for that, and thanks for calling, Jim, whole team.
I I I think we, uh, and also I want to thank the support we've had on the community cleanup days, we haven't done one since COVID. But we would, people would cruise around with their pickups and teams would find the trash on the curb, an old file cabinet. Old exercise machine in the bushes, we'd haul it out and get it over there and the dump truck would pick it up. Um, I think we're going to be due for one next summer, maybe.
Yeah, I'm usually the one that picks those cleanups together.
Non-rainy season's a good time.
Alright, so uh, this is a question about the composting or the organic waste. Um, I know like dog waste and all that is not allowed in there, but I do know. Other countries do allow it, I think it's like a temperature thing about where, how they process it. Any thoughts on that? Cause I do know, like, especially in our neighborhood, a lot of that gets generated and people leave it everywhere. Um.
It's supposed to go into your garbage can.
No, it it is, I know, and, yeah.
Not on your neighborhood.
Other countries, like European countries, they compost the dog wastes at a higher temperature.
Believe it or not, there are tree species that have subnook in our county that are not supposed to be composted, you know, that we're not supposed, you're supposed to handle it on site. So, these pathogens, it's the length of time that it's turned into compost, right?
Right.
They have to be heated to such a high temperature over a long period of time to kill kill all these pathogens. Well, commercial composting programs, you know, don't. Just due to the sheer volume, they don't have the time to let it sit for this long period of time to kill all these pathogens, so. Lots of this stuff, they like it, keep, that kept out of the.
Is is that, because in the US, we generate a lot more waste compared to, like I said, I've seen this more in the European countries where they do collect it and compost. Uh, through that process, the high heating process.
I don't know, I I just know as long as I've been in waste for twenty-eight years, and John should probably say he's been in it a lot longer than I am. Be a buy, um. I've. Cannot go into the, dog species can't go into the. And in our rural areas, actually farmers too, they have their own programs for their worst waste and. Cow, whatever they.
Right.
They can't put it into. Yeah.
Sounds like a really silly question, but I I'm thinking about the truck coming to pick up my black thing, my black bin. And it's got batteries on top, and the truck just comes and flips it over, where's, where are those batteries?
No, I mean, when the, that's why it's important to put it on the black cart. And if you're in an apartment building, you need to put it in, it's a yellow bucket, isn't it? Orange. So your home, if you need to tape it to the top of the black cart and the driver sees, and I do it all the time.
Oh.
Tape it to the top of my black cart, and they'll see it when they're driving and they'll get out and.
Okay, Arielle, I just have a bunch of batteries in a plastic bag, waiting to figure out.
They they'll look at it and they'll see, they they have to stop, it takes more time for them when they see it, but um, at least they'll put it in the right spot.
Yeah, you'll get out of the truck.
Oh, one one more comment, they got repair clinics at Southern Public Library, so instead of throwing it out in the plants and buying a new one at Target. You can take the old blender or whatever is broken and and there's someone to help you fix it.
Yeah, we just said that, it's actually one of our programs, the fixing clinic, we just did it at the library. Yeah, and um, it's at most libraries in 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 San Mateo County where you can bring your own appliance, yeah. But if it can't be fixed, it, uh, you can bring the small appliance, like the hair dryers or the curling irons or. Whatever else you have, toasters, blenders, to the shoreway, and they have a bin for the smaller stuff, yeah.
Any other questions for Lilian, ever?
I think, yeah. Eh, question about um. The um. The program that uh, San Mateo County has to report um. Eh, eh, trash left on the, on this, dumped on the, on the street, um. SMC reported or?
Yeah, SMC, yeah.
Right, so um. I've used it a couple of times where, you know, it it seems like. It's not effective in a timely manner, you know, things staying for even a couple of months. Um. Eh, do you guys collaborate with county eh, in or how?
What happens is it goes into the, if it goes into C Click Fix, right? Depending on what it is, it goes to different people. So, there's a shopping cart vendor that we share with Redwood City. If there's items in that shopping cart, then DPW has to fit it on their schedule to clean it out for the cart guy to get it. If it's on private property, that's code enforcement, that's going to take a couple of months, because they have to follow their home enforcement process. If it's a couch, then it's a bulky item and it's not loose, we send it to recology and they will issue a ticket and. And come out and get it, yeah, and so depending on what it is, yeah, it goes to different departments or different.
Right, and and so, but who manages it from county?
We do.
The Office of Sustainability?
We, we take a look at the program and make sure things are being routed in the right place. Sometimes things go into the wrong category, like they'll go to code, and they, it's not a code issue. So then, you know, we have to go in and then reroute it and, yeah.
But in this sense, the app, the app is still working?
Yeah, it still works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We just addressed a whole bunch of stuff on there today.
Yeah. Any other questions from the council for Lilian?
But sorry to interrupt, but we do not check it every day, we usually check it, you know, once a week to make sure things are being found.
Oh, um, in the city of Palo Alto, they have a reporting system like that, but it's for vehicles on the street. And they actually will report back to acknowledge that we got it. And what their estimated solution is, so that's a suggestion, maybe you can improve communication two-way.
I believe recology, when they're going to pick something up, they will let you know the date that they're going to put it up. And same thing with our road department, they'll let you know when. Yes.
Through the chair, um, I know that once a year, they, you have the large pickup. How much notice is that? Do you need to be notified before you want that?
Oh, for our spring, we took me to the summer. Is that the one you're talking?
Yes, yes.
Um.
How much notice do you?
It takes a while to plan that.
Okay.
So, you know, we need volunteers. Yeah, so, the sooner the planning starts, the better. Cause it takes a couple of months to get everything figured out.
June twenty twenty-four, I'm volunteering.
We'll look at everyone's calendars and make sure, cause the.
Or July, August.
Graduation and that stuff, yeah.
Anything else from the council? Do we have any public comment?
Can can I ask one last question before?
Go ahead, ever, please.
Um, eh, back again with the, with the reported app, um, I don't believe it's available in Spanish, is it? Is it just?
I don't know if there's a translate button.
Okay.
I I'm not sure, we'd have to look.
I don't see.
I'll, I'll check, but yeah, um. Yes, it it could be helpful, you know, uh, eh, in communities like North Far Oaks that have high, you know. Um, Spanish speakers, uh, demographics, it could be very.
Yeah, I mean, we've used C Click Fix for. Seems like eight years now, I think we've had that app.
Around there.
Um. And we can talk more about Atlanta, or talk about it publicly, but. It's always a good time to revisit it.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this agenda? Okay, well, thank you very much, Lilian.
Great.
Great presentation and answering a lot of questions too, that was terrific.
Thanks.
Thank you. See, next up, uh, report ask, anything from the county executive, still have Justin on, anything to report out?
Just a real quick one, I wish I had more details, but um, given the holiday season and the uh, near completion of the Middlefield Road. Uh, project, or at least the uh, the main components of the Middlefield Road project, we are trying to get together some sort of holiday um. Uh, event uh, in North Far Oaks, likely in the Second Avenue parking lot. Uh, I I I don't have a lot of details confirmed, but watch your inboxes, we'll be trying to get the word out. Uh, in the next couple of weeks for some sort of North Far Oaks holiday celebration, we've never done something like this before, but it felt like a good year to do it.
That would be terrific, thanks, Justin, and do let us know when that gets uh, that gets put together.
Absolutely.
For Kelly and Mariella, we usually do like a round table at the end of the meeting. Primarily just to share things we've heard from the community, other community meetings we've been to, that kind of thing, so. I'll go around the table tonight, don't feel the need to contribute, or that you're being put on the spot or anything like that, okay? We'll start with, uh, Blair, go ahead, anything for a report out?
Um. The library is still a great resource, I was at Redwood City and they had the Redwood City United Against Hate. And on the presentation, they had San Mateo County, well, at the North Far Oaks branch, they got the North Far Oaks stands. United Against Hate, both in Spanish and English. So if you did want to display something like in the window of your business or of your home, you could. Um, they also have an author speaker for the uh, the theme of standing against hate. Um, it's a, it's a great resource here, the library system. Uh, and I got here, I came right from work, and I was here early enough, I just walked all the way down to Fifth and back. There's a lot of sidewalks vendors, um, and. That Casa Circulo was doing a Taekwondo class, all the parents were out front, they were like taking pictures, there there's a. I I normally hang out on the Al Camino side, because I live on the other side of the train tracks, but there's a, there's some vitality. You know, in the, these days of winter when it's dark out, there's still a lot of activity, and I was pleased to see it. Um, and I looked at the furniture store that the county owns and it's going to turn into that job center and all the other stuff, but. Um, there's signs of hope.
Oh, yeah, and wait, wait till Middlefield Road is completely done, it'll be busting, for sure.
How about you, ever, anything uh, to report out?
Yeah, so, um, uh, attended a meeting uh, from the California Energy Commission. So they are, um, eh, state of California has. Um, this um, project to um. Eh, help meet eh, the cleaner energy goals and they are thinking about. Um, eh, decommissioning uh, gas lines uh, throughout the state. And, um. It sounded to me like, you know, there's a lot of things that they haven't really um, eh, anticipated. Um, eh, but they are looking into um. Eh, vulnerable communities and North Far Oaks is a vulnerable communities. Eh, to sort of try to equitably um. Tackle these communities that will have special needs and, you know, um, extra expenses. Because obviously, it's it's not going to be an easy thing for a family, uh, working class to, all of a sudden. it's not gonna be an easy thing for a family, uh, working class to all of a sudden, you know, um, do away with using their gas, um, for appliances and heating, et cetera. Um, so that conversion will be really tricky and it may never work, you know, if if there are, um, economic incentives in place uh, to support those families, but anyway, um, I, um, I suggested that, um. Uh, that maybe our council could get a presentation so that we can look at the issues and understand what, uh, what the state is trying to do. Um, and so hopefully they'll get in touch with, uh, the chair and, um, try to book a, a presentation for entire council. Okay, yeah.
Do you have a contact on that, or?
I do, yeah, I'll, I'll.
Forward that on too, you may have already, this sounds familiar.
Yeah, yeah, I I already mentioned, and I think I might have, um, CC'd you on it, but I'll I'll make sure that, um. Uh, that if they intend to, you know, pursue that, that they have a full presentation.
Yeah, and the mitigation. This would be a good forum to discuss mitigation alternatives, things like that, so Niket to report out today.
Um, so I did run into a couple neighbors, uh, last weekend or weekend before, um. There's some concern as we're getting into the winter season, and it's gonna be in El Nino with a lot of rain, that uh, trying to avoid repeating of flooding from last year, um, would love to at least be so they've asked to be able to speak to us, and but I think we're gonna try for January, if I'm not mistaken. Um, but in the meantime, I think they were asking, is there a way for the county to uh, provide like updates or contact information, especially like um, pump stations that are not being activated or stuff like that, and how do we, how do they get in touch with somebody? Because last time that happened, um, the fire department couldn't even get the pump station activated, they didn't have access, so, um, it's again, just more, is there information readiness, plans around this winter again, climate change is happening, all that stuff, so. Um, again, would love to see if there's a way or resources from our side, and I don't know if anybody here can speak to that, but, uh.
I don't know if, uh.
Justin must have his hand up.
For me?
Justin must have his hand up.
Okay, uh, go ahead, please, Justin.
Sure, just wanted to respond to that quickly, appreciate the concern. Our, um, Department of Emergency Management is working on some, uh, winter storm-related, uh, community messages, which we will be uh, putting out to the community, and I know that our Public Works has, um, uh, numbers to call, I don't have them, but they do have a a website, and so we will work to get that information out to you all.
Are those twenty-four by seven or only like business hours?
Uh, it, for emergencies, it should, obviously will be twenty-four seven, I don't have that information at at my fingertips, but we'll, we'll make sure to push that information out to council members and, uh, include it in in, uh, and outreach.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Niket, you know, actually, Tim, um, new members. It's probably about that time of year, we should do Brown Act and Ethics Training, so January perhaps would be a good time to do that. Okay, um, I'll pull my agenda for January together, but I think we'll have a slot on there for you, we can do that. Cover everyone at once, that would be great, I'll be there, alright, thank you, Juan Carlos, report out?
Uh, no, not.
Uh, Mariella, anything beyond what you said earlier tonight?
Uh, I did speak to fellow business owners, and we were thinking far ahead of summer twenty twenty-four, right? And we're hoping to bring back the, there was like a festival that was happening, and we're hoping to do some sorts of block party, whatever it is, to get business owners excited about this, you know, once the street is almost done. I feel that a lot of us are very exhausted, and we're kinda just wanting it done, and that kind of mentality, and I would love to change that in some sort of get it, get excited, right? So that we get the word out to, to, you know, the community and others around to come by and check our businesses include everybody from on Middlefield that's been affected, to get the business owners and employees excited, you know, and then get everybody to come.
Yeah, we were able to do that in twenty twenty-two, this year because of the scope of the construction work at the time, we would have had the festival, it wasn't possible, but it's.
They did it in the parking lot here, it's.
It was different.
Yeah. It was a smaller.
Yeah, we were thinking more of the back days, yeah, right on Middlefield Road, yeah.
I'm talking to the sheriff and discussing what we can do in that regard, there will be some kind of festival next year.
Well, close the street for parade to celebrate opening the street.
Right?
My vision is a big wildfire.
And I remember a lot of people come out, it was uh, getting to the year, you you know, all the business owners that would come out of the tents and introduce themselves to the community, so it's great.
I'm curious, like, I think Halloween has actually turned into a really great time for that, especially creating like a communities, like a safe space for trick-or-treating and like that, get the kids out and things like that, and I don't know how long it takes to plan, but I'd imagine it's a while, so that might be something worth thinking about also.
Yeah, put a table outside of your business, tents of sort, and then hand out, yeah, it'd be great.
The trees will be nice and grown in, and we'll have a great day.
That's right, new tradition for Middlefield Road.
Eric's Chamber of Commerce sponsors.
Yeah, there you go.
Can I just say one, one comment to that? I I know we laugh when we say, oh, let's have a parade and block me off the road, but I like to remind everyone that twenty-three years ago, when the when the Middlefield, uh, Road Festival started, and I, and I was a very young legislative aide to then county supervisor, we did block Middlefield Road, and I was out there with the crane at five in the morning, uh, decorating Middlefield Road side to side, it, 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 it has happened, it can happen, and given the magnitude of this project, I think it merits something like that, um, I, I think it's worth the discussion, yeah.
I recall, it's not too long ago, I used to go to these events, and it was something that you would look forward to, it's some sort of downtown Dia de los Muertos, it was very similar to where everybody was looking forward to it.
Yep.
It's vibrant fun, music, yeah, it was.
Tree festival, yeah.
Uh, Kathleen, anything?
Oh, nothing, just to add to what Evers was talking about, the Bell Haven neighborhood of Menlo Park. Uh, is, there's some connections that could be made, they're talking about electrification and um, they've gotten some grant from, can't remember the name of the agency, but if you want any more information, um, I can put you in touch with some people in Bell Haven. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Okay.
Could, yeah, provide what they're trying to do out there.
Kelly, anything else?
The only thing, just building on this festival, there's also a annual event that happens, Neighbor's Night Out, which happens at, it's either, I think.
First weekend, August.
August, yeah, and so there's already events that are about community and neighbors, and I'm with you, I would love to see the whole street shut down. Not just in, for Neighbor's Night Out, I love the idea of October as well, but I, I think those are the natural opportunities for people to enjoy in every way, and they've done it everywhere else in neighboring communities, so.
Okay, thanks, I actually don't have anything, but I might report, I was gonna be asking Tim to do Brown Act training, so. Something we all look forward to every year, but is is very necessary, and I think the newer members appreciate some of the nuances of all that. Um, with that, thanks to all of our presenters tonight, members of the public who attended and participated. As always, thanks to our county staff, Kenny, Josh, Jennifer, Bo, Justin, and, uh, Tim, their support. Our next council meeting's going to be a study session, January eighteenth. Hard for me to say this, but twenty twenty-four, believe that, from seven to nine. We're gonna discuss parking, particularly issues around residential parking near the Middlefield Road Business District. Reached out to Ann Stillman, who's working with the Roads Division to get a presentation on the work that was done some time ago with regard to the permits, to a permit system for North Far Oaks, and a lot of the, the background analysis that went into that conditions that are very similar to what we're facing today haven't changed much. I've also asked the sheriff to come and discuss their current law enforcement efforts. We'll have Christian here from Redwood City to answer questions about the issues they faced there, um. And the goal of this session is to come away with a recommendation or two that we can agendaize at our next meeting and make a recommendation for, to hopefully, uh, you know, we won't solve the problem of parking in the residential areas near our business community, but maybe we can come up with a couple of things that'll help, uh, mitigate that, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Alright.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.